Audio's live. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Dudley Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November 7th, 2022. We'll call this meeting in order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve the minutes of 10:24, 22.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of our cover 24, 2022 as written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous. Okay, we have some appointments. Council on Aging Director Deb Johnson, no relation, term to expire June 30th, 2023. Does Deb here tonight?
Yes.
Would you like to say anything?
Well, I'm welcome, I'm thankful to have the job and...
Come up to the mic, introduce yourself.
I'm Deb Johnson, I've been a resident of Dudley for forty-five years. My children have gone to school here and off onto bigger, better things. I was very excited when I saw the job in the paper, I said, oh, I think I can fit that in. And I started already working, cleaning out the offices and working with the lunches downstairs. They're wonderful, they're so happy to have a director, I mean, like, they clapped when I came in, so that was great. And so I'm very excited to go forward with this program and get things for the elderly and help them out as much as I possibly can.
Excellent, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Welcome aboard, look forward to working with you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Deb, really glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the appointment of Deb Johnson to the Council on Aging Director, the term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
You guys went to school with your kids?
Yeah, we did. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, unanimous. Shepherd Hill Student Representative Vanessa Baklowski, welcome.
Thank you.
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm a junior at Shepherd Hill this year, I'm really excited to have this opportunity and to work with all of you, I think it will be wonderful for the both of us and I can't wait to see what this brings.
Excellent. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say welcome, I think this is probably about the ten, ten or twelve student rep I've served with and they've all had a pretty good showing, I would expect nothing less than maybe two years out of you.
Yes, hopefully.
Got a question. Correct pronunciation of your last name?
Baklowski.
Thank you.
There you go.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
It's board's pleasure. Chairman, I move that we appoint Vanessa Baklowski to be the Shepherd Hill Student Representative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Zoning Board of Appeals alternate Steve Watroba, term to expire 6/30/2023.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Steve Watroba to be an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Second.
We have a second discussion. Drawn point. All, roll call, no, sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
It's a Monday. Opposed, none, unanimous, thank you. Citizens comments, anyone in the crowd have anything to say that's not already on the agenda? Hearing none, let's move on to Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to use my report tonight to talk about, a little bit about the cost of the energy, both what taxpayers pay for municipal energy and what they're going to be paying probably over the next year or two, I think it's a hot topic and a timely topic and I'd like to have a quick public discussion about how the town buys energy. So, there's several type of energy initiatives that we are pursuing, and when I talk about energy, I'm talking specifically about municipal buildings, what we pay for our municipal energy. In 2012, the town entered into an agreement to purchase solar credits for twenty years. The price of this agreement is point zero eight five cents per kilowatt hour with a two percent annual escalator, and that accounts for almost eighty-five percent of our usage. We've had a lot of discussions over the last four years about our solar tax credits. As time goes on, the amount produced by a solar array reduces, so over the course of twenty years, that eighty-five percent average amount reduces, that's because of the storage capacity, the batteries and so forth. Additionally, there's a two percent annual escalator, which on point zero eight cents per kilowatt hour doesn't amount to too much, but now at the halfway mark, we're paying closer to nine cents per kilowatt hour, which is still significantly lower than the national grid average rate of twenty-six cents per kilowatt hour. I mentioned that approximately eighty percent of our usage is derived from solar credits at a nine cent per kilowatt hour rate, that means that the fifteen percent remaining and any remaining amount after that would default to the national grid rate unless we took additional steps to reduce the burden to taxpayers. So the MMA, which is the Massachusetts Municipal Association, negotiates an energy contract that all cities and towns in the Commonwealth are eligible to participate in and most do. It's fully vetted by the MMA's legal team, there was no additional fee built into the price, and the Town of Dudley's been taking advantage of it for over twelve years. This year, we locked into a twenty-four month contract at sixteen cents per kilowatt hour, which is ten cents lower than national grid's twenty-six cent per kilowatt hour, and that rate will be applied to the fifteen percent, which is the balance between, off of the eighty-five percent we get from solar credits. So eighty-five percent of our energy, we're paying almost nine cents per kilowatt hour as opposed to the average of twenty-six cents, and the balance of fifteen percent, we're paying about sixteen cents, sixteen cents per kilowatt hour. So we're doing all we can in terms of trying to get the best rate for the taxpayer for the cost of these lights, for example. Additionally, we've been able to work with the school districts so that our Dudley schools are considered municipal off-takers, and by doing that, the schools are able to take advantage of the net metering credits that the town currently has and will have available when the MRSco project is completed at the site of our cap landfill. We also have taken advantage of Green Communities Grants as they have become available to improve the efficiency of our energy consumption over the course of the last four years. As the Board recalls, my predecessor converted all of our streetlights to more energy efficient LED lights. Then, as the Board recalls, the town has, every year since 2019, maximized the availability of Green Communities grant funding and done energy audits at all town-owned buildings, which resulted in the conversion of all town hall lights, such as these, to be more efficient and intuitive LED lights. We've completed improvements such as better insulation in town hall building, the windows have been weatherized and sealed, smart sensors and timers for all HVAC systems, et cetera, and this included the police side of the building as well, which I think actually that project is underway right now. So I'm happy to report that as the Board has directed, we are doing a lot to reduce our municipal energy costs and burden to the taxpayer, and I'm pretty confident that we absolutely done the best deal we can for what we pay for municipal energy at this point. So, aside of municipal energy, as Dudley residents, we're all feeling the cost of increased energy costs in our own homes, and we've received some inquiries, Michelle's received a lot, that mention that some towns can negotiate better rates for their residents, and Michelle and I began looking into that. It's called aggregate pricing, it's a form of group energy pricing that a hundred and fifty Massachusetts communities currently are taking advantage of, including Boston, Worcester, Cambridge, and Webster. Recently, I spoke with Mass Power Choice, who is the brand vetted by the Commonwealth to help Massachusetts cities and towns purchase electricity through community aggregation programs. The process to position Dudley to purchase electricity through community aggregation process involves a town meeting vote, which we have to go to town meeting and give the selectmen authority to enter into an agreement for community aggregation by purchasing. And if the town meeting vote is successful, it then takes up to fourteen months, which is ironic because it used to take about fourteen weeks, now it takes fourteen months for DPU to approve the town meeting vote that says that the town wants to purchase aggregate, participate in aggregate energy pricing. In any, in any event, the most compelling argument that I have heard to date was from my colleague, the Town Administrator in Webster, who told me that Webster has benefited from municipal electricity aggregation and they've already passed a town meeting, they've already accepted it, and the Town of Webster is poised beginning in October, beginning last month, based on real and forecasted increase in electricity rates on average, a savings of a hundred and thirty bucks per electric bill for their residents because they participate in this program per month, on average. So it's something that we, it's something we definitely want to pursue, we want to look at that aggregate cost pricing for all residents in town, needs to go to the town meeting, the town meeting has to vote, participate in it, DPU has to say yes, that's a good deal, and then everyone is able to opt out anytime they want, they don't have to participate in it, if they prefer to pay the twenty-six cent national grid or if they have some other arrangement, they can certainly do that. But this is something that we really should be looking at and taking advantage of, so I'm going to put that on the springtime meeting warrant. Also, there's some resources that are currently available for income qualifying residents, and what I mean available, I mean they're available now, that will provide some immediate relief in the form of a reduced energy bill, all this information will, or currently is available on the town's Facebook page, on cable TV and on the town's website, it's also a link on the, on the Selectmen's page now and on my page, it's, there's information on how certain households can contact their energy providers and qualify for reduced energy rates of up to twenty-five percent off, that's income qualification. And they can enroll in a payment plan through the energy provider, and there's protection against shut-off for up to twelve months for people who have a hard time struggling with paying their bills. You can sign up for energy audit, audits and potential low-cost upgrades for tenants and homeowners by taking advantage of insulation, heating, system repair, inefficient appliance replacement, including freezers, refrigerators, washers, that sort of thing, that's the, a lot of people I know have already taken advantage of that, just that simple energy audit, they come in, they give you more energy efficient light bulbs, insulation, that sort of thing. And to find out more about income qualified discounts, for example, if you're a resident that is receiving SNAP benefits, Social Security, Mass Health, WIC, et cetera, you can receive help with fuel and energy assistance by calling, and again, this is going to be on the website, 1-800-322-3223 for electric and 800-233-5325, and for shut-off protection for electric, the number is 888-211-1313, or again, 800-233-5325 for gas service, again, this will all be posted. And if you don't have access to that, if you're watching this on TV and you don't have access to the internet or at the Facebook page, you can call Michelle or Ryan, we'd be happy to give you that information. So, the bottom line is that we're doing what we can to help residents, not just now, but it's not going to happen immediately. There were programs out there that I think we should take advantage of, it requires a town meeting vote, and we're going to pursue that so that it's in place hopefully for next year.
Mr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, guys, thank you for bringing that forward, I mean, it's very, very timely, I think in, what, November 1st, National Grid says electric rates are going up sixty-something percent.
Sixty-four percent.
Sixty-four percent, if I'm correct, and everybody could use a little bit of help with all this going on, with the teetering economy, bad economy, however you want to put it, any, any, any little bit helps, and I appreciate you keeping, keeping the residents front of mind and how we can help them, thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you, ironically, Mr. Root brought that up, there was an article in the Webster Times somewhere in the last month or so, I know Oxford's part of that aggregate too, and I just wonder, could our local delegation, if it's a hundred and fifty communities are in it, why would they have to take a fourteen-month vetting process if we reached out to our local legislatures, would there be a chance we could maybe, obviously we're probably not for this winter, but people use electricity in the summer, maybe we can get it moved up, and you would think, we got budding towns and a hundred and fifty in the Commonwealth, there should not be a fourteen-month approval, especially as Mr. Massey said, National Grid came out right around October 1st and said we're going to raise our rate sixty-seven percent, and boy, four weeks later, it was raised, there was no DPU oversight on that.
I'm sure Mr. Chairman, they'll, they'll be happy to help us, I will serve to make that call.
Please do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
All right.
After what you have this fine.
All right, any new business? On to old business. Highway Superintendent, update on Brandon Road Mill Race Bridge.
So, just a quick update on the Mill Race Bridge, we're, be required to go to the, in front of the Conservation Commission, just to get clearance, whether it's a notice of determination of applicability or a full filing is, is unknown, but I'm going to work at getting that on to the, in front of the Conservation Commission, and then we'll be able to get a RFP out for the demolition phase of the, of the project, and in the meantime, we're still working on, speaking with local, local politicians, Mass, Mass DOT for a funding mechanism for the, what will, what will be the temporary replacement of the bridge, so, that's about all for now, on as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Policy on Group Health Dental and Life Insurance Coverage for Active Employees.
Mr. Chairman, Rich submitted a draft proposal for a group insurance policy, which we vetted through Mark Terry Labor Council to take a look at it, and over a series of conversations, we've settled on the draft that is in the packet and on OneDrive. And I believe there was one, there was one bit of feedback from, from Rich's office, and it was, I think we remedied that by adding a line at the end that says provided such exception that consistent with law. So I think this policy's ready to go, I haven't heard any negative feedback after that, I think we've satisfied the requirements on both ends and it's ready for a vote.
Rich, any comments?
Good evening, projecting tonight, take ten seconds, this is our compliance document, this is how we do business, so we want to make sure that it is proactive, not reactive, you want to make sure that eight, nine-hundred thousand that you're spending on health insurance has some guidelines, nothing's arbitrary, it's a generational process. We've had a couple of back and forths, I was able to speak with Mark Terry on a few occasions, remember, we want to make the strongest policy possible, we don't want anything just to be perceived as being subjective and not objective, and again, we're trying to find something that fits into the Town of Dudley and how it is run, but also Blue Cross, Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust, also, you want to make sure that your OPEB liability sort of gets reined in, and it's to be fair and consistent with the law, so I think, I think we have a, a solid package, sort of expecting a question here or there, really, at the end of the day, it's got a few borrowed aspects in it, but more of a best practice than anything, so happy to move it forward.
Mr. Town Administrator, what would you like us to do?
I'd like you to take a vote, yea or nay, to adopt this policy effective tonight.
It's the board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the legal review, reviewed policy on group health, dental and life insurance coverage for active employees and retirees, which is currently in draft form as written.
On second, can we just add the date that the draft was compiled eight twenty-two, twenty-two, looks like? And be officially adopted as of tomorrow, eleven Eve?
Good point, Mr. Chair.
That's fine with me.
No, we, in case it's more than one draft, we'll, I don't know, they don't...
Okay, yeah, yes, good.
Discussion.
Just want to thank everyone that worked on this, Mr. Chair.
All right, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
All right, next item, old business, borrowing for Partridge Hill and the payback period and amount.
Mr. Chairman, we've had, been having an internal conversation back and forth on this item, as the Board recalls, it started about four weeks ago, when there was some question about the payback period, we're still having those conversations as of tonight, and I think we need to have a few more internal conversations to carry this forward before we have a public session.
So, Mr. Chair, make this a future agenda item and the emails we've been copied on and just take those under advisement for now.
Want to go two weeks or any more than that?
I think two weeks should do the trick.
Okay.
Bring it back up in two weeks.
So, should we just table it then, automatically?
No, we don't want to do that.
No? Yeah, that's just...
What's in that?
Yeah, to misconstrue this.
Yeah, to consent, pick it up in two weeks.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see some resolution to most of this, at least one of these projects is already done, we kind of hung our hat on it to the people, they were here many times, we actually held up the completed project for people to go and take a look at, to show that we, with Jeff Murray's help, we stood by our word and we did what we told we would do, so I think we should carry that all the way through to the...
Under budget, by the way.
Under budget, in today's economy, and I think we should be able to button this up and keep our word to the people.
Hundred percent. All right, we'll keep working on it and come back in two weeks and see if we can finish this, all right?
Thank you. Thanks, Council.
All right, the next item is the Student Representative, putting you on the spot, you've already introduced yourself, is there anything else you'd like to talk about?
Um, not much going on at Shepherd Hill right now, the boys soccer team just played the first state's game at Shepherd Hill, actually, on Friday, unfortunately, they lost, but they did have an incredible season, and it was the first state's game ever played at Shepherd Hill. Another thing that was talked about actually today in my history class is Charlie Baker passed a law in 2018, and it's finally being implemented in history classes this year about how we have to work on a civics project, so this year is eighth graders and juniors, so including myself, will be the guinea pigs for this project, so I'll be sure to keep you updated, and the project runs through, I think, around January 24th, that's when the second quarter ends and it's our midterm grade, so that's exciting, and then, yeah, that's pretty much it that's going on at Shepherd Hill currently.
So, Mr. Massey.
Thanks, Vanessa, what, what's an example of a, of a civics project that they're looking for?
Things on how to improve your community, so they gave some examples today, so they talked about dress code, implementing a better dress code in the school, and just other ways to help out the community, there was something about like teen pregnancy, I don't remember any of the other examples, but those were two that stuck out to me, but I'll be sure to keep you guys updated on the project as it continues.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard again. All right, departmental communication. All right, Chief.
Hold by height.
We'll go right to left next week.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, welcome, welcome to our new student representative, it's always good to have schools represented with everything, we didn't have any major issues with Halloween, so that was a good thing, I think everybody enjoyed themselves, we were, we applied for a federal grant through the Department of Justice for a additional officer, but we were unsuccessful in that, that attempt, Lieutenant Kalowitz and Officer Magus put that, that program together, did a lot of work on it, but I think unfortunately, being a competitive and a national grant, that was, that was a difficult thing to obtain, but they did some really good work on it, so we'll keep trying and see what we can get through. Lastly, I think you saw something, I attended the International Chiefs Conference a few weeks back, it's really good sessions that were there on field training in today's world, dealing with suicide or suicidal individuals, dealing with the anti-police culture and community relation events, I was also asked, a couple of years back, I had, I taught a program on the virtual conference that was held in 2020, and I had asked if they wanted me to teach it in person this year, and they, they let me do that, so it was a great experience, I had navigating the waters in a small community, and I had about seventy-five to a hundred people in the, in the class at that time, from all over the country, and you get to meet people from all over the world, and it is something to see the different, even though you're in different places, you deal with a lot of similar things, especially in today's world with retaining, retaining officers, recruiting people and everything else of that nature, so it was a great experience, so probably my, probably my last one, I mean, who knows, but it was a great experience, so that's about all that I have from here. Thank you very much.
Chief, they don't have like a nationwide retired chiefs conference?
Oh, no, I could, I could, I could probably still go, I mean, I think in a couple of years, I'm going to be in Boston, so that should be, it might be something I'd go to, but...
A day trip.
Yeah, it's, you know, the one thing that they do is when they, they run these programs, it's designed for, they bring in people from all over the world, so I met people from Nigeria, you know, Cambodia, people from everywhere, and they, they run the tracks differently too, so if you're from a big city or a small town, you can find something that applies to your area, that's why the program I was teaching was geared towards smaller communities, but it's, it's outstanding, it's outstanding training and great opportunities with things, so, yeah, my, my successor, I'd highly encourage to be able to attend these whenever, whenever they can, because it is a really, really good, good learning experience, that's for sure. Thank you much.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief?
A well-tanned chief.
Good evening, with the election tomorrow, I just wanted to remind everybody that the fire truck's on the ballot tomorrow, again, it's a dead exclusion, I know every time we go through this, there's confusion, I don't understand why, but we've put it out there on social media, I think it was reposted on the town website, correct?
Yes.
We laid it all out, we gave the numbers, we gave a very detailed, we put pictures on the website. I just wanted to remind people it's on there and go out and vote. Current truck is in sad shape. It may come to the point where we have to take it out of service. It carries all our extrication tools, and it's so, the new truck is so we can provide an adequate service to the town. It's an infrastructure upgrade, no different than what the water department's doing with their infrastructure, or the police department, or the highway. You have to keep up on the infrastructure, or the departments will fail to complete their tasks. And being a dead exclusion, it's, when it's paid off, it goes away, so it's not a permanent increase. So that's all I have on that. And the other thing, the Marine Corps League contacted me last week, and they wanted to put a Toys for Tots box at the fire station, so we're now doing Toys for Tots for the Marine Corps League, which I'm a member of, so I wasn't going to say no. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Awesome. Great cause. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Highway, Jeff, you got anything else?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I've gotten several, several calls. We did a few paving projects over the last summer, and we've been waiting for the line strapping to happen, particularly Dudley Oxford Road. I know at night, it's pretty difficult with the, it's pretty dark over there. So they, because of all of the rain that we've had recently, it's kind of hindered that. They were, they again showed up last Monday, and it started to, started to sprinkle a short time after they were to do it. They do it overnight, so they start about eight o'clock at night and then continue from there. It's now scheduled for next Monday night, so hopefully we don't receive any rain. The weather's getting a little colder, and especially overnight, so it'll make it difficult to get that done if it continues to, the weather continues to degrade. But fingers crossed, we'll get that done, and there's a couple hundred thousand square, a couple hundred thousand linear feet of line strapping that'll be done throughout town on all the major routes, so it'll make it a little bit safer. A couple of other things, too, is the, we're working on the MS4 compliance stuff that carries us through to the reporting period next year. They increase the requirements every year. We're doing inspecting, cleaning, and monitoring of outfalls and inlets. Goes along with the reporting that has to be done, you know, keeps us in compliance with that. We're also finalizing the electrical connections for the, the brine equipment at the highway department, so we'll be ready to do that, and we're, you know, getting prepared for the winter season with snow and ice control equipment. So we have our crews working on that, as well as making road repairs. So they've been out on Dudley Southbridge Road recently. There's a couple of other roads that they're going to be doing, some milling of areas that are in poor condition and, and paving and patching to preserve the, the life of the roadways. And also, last, a couple of last things where there's some grant opportunities that we're working on. So, a couple of safe routes to schools, grant applications, that'll be going in shortly. One for the Mason Road School, one for, one over at Shepherd Hill, for some improvements there. And then, also, a MEMA, FEMA grant opportunity that we're looking at or working on, that'll be submitted in the beginning of December, and potential of up to a fifteen million dollar opportunity for that with, for some culvert upgrades, which would preserve the new treatment facility for the water department, incorporate a MassDOT culvert on Route twelve, Schofield Ave, and then another, another culvert that's located on the suit apartment property. So we've actually gained verbal improvement, approval from the Mass Highway to submit for that, that grant in their name, and then we would, you know, if, if we were successful, it's a ninety-ten split, so FEMA would pick up ninety percent of the cost, and the town would be responsible for about ten percent, and it would alleviate some of the flooding problems that's gone on within the Potashbrook area, Route twelve. So, that's, that's about it.
Mr. Chair, quick question?
Jeff, one sec. Jeff, one sec. Remains after milling. There was a, there was a resident at town meeting mentioning the, the milling, what's it called?
Scarifying, or something like that?
There was a snowblow issue?
Yeah. The, the remains after milling on Dudley Oxford, if you could, if the guys could check to see if there's any mounds of it in people's driveways and stuff. It's probably all cleaned up now, but just a...
Sure, we could do that. I've had, so they've been out doing routine sweeping and, and cleaning. All of the areas have been, all, any of the paving projects that have happened, we've gone and backed up the roadway with appropriate materials. Some, in some areas, it's actually, it's actually some of the millings that were created during the process that would back up the road. Some of, some of the areas, it's actually loomed, loomed and seeded. So, yeah, if there's, you know, certainly, I get calls all the time. We respond to resident concerns or complaints, and I would urge people to call the highway department directly, and we can address any of the issues. If we don't know about it, I guess we can't really cure, cure any issues, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think the issue was, like, they were concerned that, like, when during plow season, it would plow, like, was on the side of the road, like, into their driveway, and then they couldn't be able to, wouldn't be able to move it, mess the snow blowers up, the millings.
Yeah, I, okay.
That's how, that was how it was presented to us.
Yeah, I understand, but I, yeah, I don't think that, that shouldn't be a problem.
One more, Jeff.
Jeff, thanks.
I know we talked recently about starting the catch basin cleaning, and we start around the waterways.
Yep.
So a resident from Klondike just reached out and wanted to know if there was, like, a schedule, like, you're going to be, you know, pay a punt this, this day or this week, you know, Klondike? Do you have, like, a schedule, or is it just, they go as far as they can every day, and then you just pick up?
Yeah, so that, what happens is, and it, it varies depending on the amount of debris or amount of cleaning that needs to be done. We've actually realized a much shorter amount of time that we have to spend out there now because we didn't, we didn't use sand or sand salt mix last year for snow and ice control. So, the, the year five requirements actually, or the year four requirements actually require intermittent, intermittent cleaning, so we go out and sweep and do basin cleaning in between when we would ordinarily do that in the springtime. And again, there's, there's far less debris for us to pick up. And as far as schedule, we actually, we're fitting that in between any of the other work that's going on. So when we're out doing resurfacing work or repair work, that commits a lot of the resources to, to doing just that, and we can't always be out on doing the basin cleaning. And then, and then it's weather dependent, too, you know, that, so rain or freezing weather impacts that as well.
So same thing as the milling, then? If someone has a question, and I'm calling you, and just say, hey, can you take a look at my street or my area, whatever?
Sure.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, Jeff.
Excellent. Thanks.
George, water sewer.
Good evening. Just a quick update. The water tank projects have completed. Both tanks now have been rehabbed, cleaned, disinfected, and good clean water's now in them. Our PFOS treatment right now, in the, in our vessel, is working and maintaining the proper state standards, and even keeping it way below them. So I think the people at Dudley's got really good clean water right now in all aspects of it. The treatment center is on schedule. It is actually ahead of schedule a little bit. It's, they're working hard down at Station Six to get that all done. We finished up a few other projects at Station One. We're going to hope that we can use that as a backup or in, in the service line if we're able to. We still have to do some PFOS testing there. But that's all come to fruition, too. We also are on schedule for springtime for the main project, which connects Station number one to the treatment center, Station number six. So in the long term, when that's complete, all stations will feed into the treatment center, instead of having individual treatment centers, which is very costly. And we should be in great shape, because I know the state's looking at lowering numbers down even more. So you'll see that coming up. And we're so far ahead right now, all our equipment and vessels and things are coming in, so we don't expect any delays with that. We did have a water main break on Ramswood Road last week, quite a long, quite a lengthy one, unfortunately. Call came in around four o'clock. It was running for a while, somebody didn't realize it was what it was. Finally, they called it in, we got there, and it, we couldn't complete it till eleven thirty for the monoledge that was there, enlarged rock and material, plus getting at the pipe itself. They don't leave much room when they bed them in stone and then cover them back with stone and material, which is very bad. But anyway, so we feel, you know, we feel bad for the people there, but we got at least back in service for eleven thirty, so they had water then. So, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasure collector? I'm saving Steve for the finale.
So in code, be brief?
Always.
Few items. Thank you. I'll pick up where George left off. We have everything signed. The two water, the water and sewer project, twenty twenty-five, that's the clean water, that's the five point two-two-five. Everybody knows it's the lower amount. The water sewer INI CW twenty fourteen, twenty-six, one of those. We have all of the closing documents. It will officially be an issuance with the state revolving fund. So thank you, appreciate long-winded read-throughs and acceptances, signing during a meeting, out of a meeting. It is appreciated. My apologies, there will be some more, because we have other projects. Health insurance, Prudent RX. The Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust is an insurance trust. We go through and monitor, I'm on the executive committee, we go through and we monitor numbers. We have gone through and hired an actuary to look at potential cost savings. One of the items is the higher-tier drugs. Nothing increases in price like high-tier drugs. There are some subsidy programs. It has just gone in as of December first. Previously, this meeting, we had an increase from National Grid. Well, there are some drug companies that will, during the course of the year, be rolling out some increases. The idea is to sort of mitigate these. A little bit of time by the trust, some individual attention, anywhere between eight hundred thousand and a million dollars in savings, and there's a second rollout to this, still in the works. So in the event anybody gets anything, let me say anybody, any employee, any retiree that receives something from Prudent RX, and there's a question, they are welcome to call my office. Right now Medicare enrollment, it is open enrollment period. For the record, the policy that was adopted this evening, nothing really has changed for Medicare. When you retire, you need to be on A and B. That's the law, at least municipally. You always have the opportunity not to enroll in the health insurance. You may come off, but not go back on. All of the Medicare substitutes that are out there are for, it's a different discussion. The Town of Dudley, as an employer, provides health insurance at the same seventy-thirty rate to their retirees. Everything, all of the coverage is consistent from the time of retirement until, unfortunately, death. There's also survivor coverage as well. The only reason I verbalize it is because I had a recent retiree reach out saying, what do I need to do? And very clearly, we've said it in stone this evening, if you are a current employee, you go to become a retiree, it's a seamless transition. You keep your coverage, and whatever machination that could be, you can retire before sixty-five, keep the same HMO. If you're a retiree under sixty-five, and you're fortunate enough to move out of the state, we'll put you on a PPO. But part of what you did ties into a few other things. So I'm glad that that went through. The other side of the insurance, the gentleman from Maya came out, and we did our policy review. So some department heads received sort of inquiries. The whole idea is that our coverage for property casualty, public officials liability, even the CHUB program, which covers public safety, there are questions being fired up because we want the correct coverage. Want to make sure that something should be scheduled. We want to make sure that all of the computers in aggregate have the right amount. What do you have for this? What do you do for that? So appreciate all of the department heads giving good information back. And again, we're not looking to be overinsured, we just don't want to have that moment of, oh, no, this should have been on a schedule with some more information on it. Water sewer bills are going to be going out shortly, probably the end of this week. Yeah, I always have good news. Tax bills, by statute, need to be in the mail for New Year's Eve. There are always people who want to pay and get the deduction in this year. You know who you are, reach out. I'm happy to take an email and reproduce a bill so that we could get that paid. And I'll smile for a second. We always leave on a positive note. We, we mentioned that the water and the sewer have issuances. Well, what here, US Bank, there's two invoices. The last two invoices for this building, remember, this is dead excluded. This is my first issuance, so twenty years, December second. This bond is going to be paid off. So when you're having your discussion about dead exclusions, we have the DE one set up for the tax rate for this year, and this is not going to be on for next year. So food for thought. There should be some planning on what's being dead excluded. And I'm not speaking to, we should do this for the school, not do this for the school, fire truck, no fire truck, whatever. I'm saying tomorrow morning, when I wake up, I know for certain that it's not, we're not going to have a twenty-first year on that dead exclusion. And the direction of the board is something that should be discussed. Remember, we had our discussion of being able to buy something with pricing of three years ago. Similar conversation that we should pick up. Appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Rich?
Oh, of course.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
DSO Steve Rogerson, please.
Mr. Chairman, I asked Mr. Rogerson to come in to talk a little bit in advance of Veterans Day about the type of services that he delivers out of his office to Dudley residents, and how it measures up with other cities and towns, and so forth and so on.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and Town Administrator. First, I'd like to present a copy, as you have in front of you, annual VA report of payments. These payments pay directly into the Town of Dudley. I highlighted the Town of Dudley in the document. I only enclosed two copies. I gave the original through email to Michelle, so she could follow up, and it covers all the towns in Carmouth. So this one here is just basically for Dudley and some other towns located in Worcester County. So as you can see, the two hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and six nine cents, that's paid out monthly to veterans in the Town of Dudley, and that is disability compensation from time serving in military. These are injuries, illnesses, disabilities they've came home with. So this is a large amount of money that comes into the town. When I was here a few years ago speaking about this, for each dollar from the federal government that comes in here, especially in VA, it's worth basically two dollars and fifty cents to the town. I mean, it gets spread around, it gets paid in rent, mortgages, but then it gets spent to purchase food and, and different businesses within the Town of Dudley. Okay? So this is very clear. This comes directly from the VA. This is not something I came up with. This, I get, it gets sent to me generally every November. I had a little earlier this year, I actually received it prior to my training that I finished a week and a half ago. Okay? But it's pretty clear, and if there's any questions, you can always email me, and I can try to do the best I can to answer it. But this is the work we do downstairs. So... the work we do downstairs. So I've, when the former Town Administrator was here and the Board of Selectmen, I brought up, it was about four years ago, of the amount of money they were paying out monthly was as close to $20,000 to veterans' benefits on the state side. And most of it's reimbursed from the state back to the Town of Dudley. But it takes about a year to recover that. Now, we're ju, just under $12,000 we're paying monthly rather than, you know, say 20. It was a little lower a few months ago, but because of inflation and all the issues that we spoke about earlier today, this is what, is definitely much less than it was, you know, four or five years ago. So it's a benefit that we take the veterans who are on some assistance within the state under the Mass General Law Chapter 105, and then transfer them to the VA and get pensions that they really should be receiving rather than going through the state side. And in Dudley, of course, has to pick up a percentage of that. So, if you're familiar with the mark, I can spend time with you in my office explaining about Mass General Law, Chapter 105, and there's a state benefit. We're the only state that does it. There's no state in the country that does what we do in Massachusetts for support to veterans. But we've had a lot of people surprised by that. But Massachusetts does more. And of course, we need to move more of them over to the federal government where they receive injuries while serving in the military. So is there any questions on this document that I could answer now?
Well, thank you.
Okay. Okay. In August, and again in October, the Veterans Office, we went through a lot of training. I went through a full week of training for my VA accreditation, which I got recertified of, had that accreditation since 2019 under state accreditation I just finished a week and a half ago. And it was very comprehensive, very good, especially going over the Camp Lejeune commercials that we're seeing everywhere, the attorneys jumping on board, which is basically bringing a big disservice to the veterans if they jump on board and sign up with these attorneys. We're not advising them what to do. I can give them my personal opinion, but if they go up through attorney, and we don't know what the amount of money is going to be, but they can never go to VA again for medical care, or they will not be able to go to the VA for compensation disability, which is what we're, we're receiving. Now, it's better to go through the VA. That way, at least you'll have medical care, and you will receive disability compensation once everything is, is gone forward through the court in North Carolina. That's where all these cases are going to be tried. They can't be tried in Massachusetts. They can't be tried in any state but North Carolina. And that was the exception the Congress had made. Okay? This past September, I also received a letter from the VFW, Veterans of Form Wars, that I was, I was nominated last September to be aide-de-camp. And generally, it's one year at a time, and they decided to keep me on for another year. So this September, I received another letter from the VFW. So it was only one per state. So I represent a state in Massachusetts to the National Commander, which is in Kansas City. And they have a new commander this year, but he decided to retain me with this new state commander in Massachusetts, his, his approval, his suggestion, his advice. So I think it was a great honor. I'm very proud to be aide-de-camp for the Commonwealth. In the military, a general aide-de-camp is an officer who basically works as a secretary or an advisor to a general, to a brigadier general, or, which is a one star, going all the way up. You have the four stars, then you have eight lieutenant colonels or advisors in an aide-de-camp position. But it's, it's a nice position, and I'm very, very proud to obtain that. I think it's good for Dudley. It's good for Webster as well. They have someone in our community who, I've checked records, nobody in our community ever had it. I was actually the first one, which, so the senior Korean War veterans were advising me that no one from the post has ever come to that, that position. So I was pretty happy. So, thank you.
Good job. Thanks, Steve.
The only thing else is just the parade. I've sent notices to everybody, and I hope everyone's going to attend this year, the Veterans Day Parade, if you can. Do we, do you know if you're going to be able to attend? It's going to be this Friday?
I'll be there. I'm working on childcare, but I'll be there.
Okay.
Got to move some more work stuff around.
Okay, if you can make it great. Usually about half of you come, you know, I realize we have other commitments outside of the, the Memorial Day Parade is actually a bigger one for us, but it is important to see you there. And we, we'd like to have you there. And we'd like you to come to the PAV after and have lunch with us after, if you will. So, thank you.
Great job, Steve. Thank you.
Board member comments. Mr. Landry.
Well, I'd like to come out and thank Steve for servicing the veterans, me being one of them, and keeping us abreast of everything that you've been doing. It's very informative. I'd like to thank all the department heads. Great job. Lot of positive feedback, projects getting done. Treasure Collector, everybody, really. Job well done. Thank you.
Well, Mark, you took this, brought all of it from me, and you left me with just one thing. The power outages. Thank you whoever over here was in contact with, whether it was the electrical people or whatever, to keep, to keep the residents informed through social media what was going on. I know when it first happened, a lot of question marks, what's going on. Well, we found out, and the residents found out, and that's the best we can ask for. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, just to follow up with what Mr. Sigunovich said, if you go to the Selectmen's page on the website, or you go to my page, there's also an outage viewer and a way to report for National Grid any outages. So it makes it even more seamless. And we try to repost on, on Facebook as well.
Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, want to welcome our student rep. And for those of you at home that do not know, we kind of hit her with everything tonight. She had no idea what she had to do, and she did very well on the fly.
Thank you.
We expect great things. To Mr. Landry, Steve Rogerson, our fire chief, anybody, Scott who served, Happy Veterans Day. I guess that's the greatest sign you can have, serve your country. Father was an Air Force veteran. Want to thank Michelle and whoever else, but I know it's mostly Michelle. I talked to her, family in town who has two family members on the banners. They're very, very happy we came out. They have nothing but positive feedback. So I'd like to thank Michelle for all she did. And tomorrow, it's vote. Sonny Kondratovic, who a lot of us know, some of you don't know here, one time summed it up best, but I'm going to clean up his language. He said, if you don't vote, give up your right to complain. He used a different word than complain. So you have to participate. I don't care what your color is, what your party is, how you want to vote. It's most important to be there. As me and Mr. Marcy always say when it's our turn to run, I'd rather have 5,000 people show up and lose than have 50 show up and win. I would love to see 60% or greater turnout. If we get there or not, we'll see. There's a lot of important local issues on there. I know I speak for the board when I say we support the fire truck purchase, 100%. As the chief said, better than I can. It's a piece of infrastructure. Mr. Marcy likes to say it's quality of life, but the bottom line is a safety feature. You hope it never goes out on the call, but as we know, mace chemical. The other day I was going home, the engine was in front of my neighbor's house where the crews are there. We don't have these equipment for our people. Very, very bad situation quickly. So show up and vote, and have a good day, and hopefully you have a good crowd at the parade on Friday.
Mr. Marcy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you guys all had some great stuff tonight, some of the things I was going to mention as well. Thank you again, Veteran Service Officer Rogerson for coming in and talking about that as we, as we lead into Veterans Day. Thanks again from Michelle and Jonathan for talking about the energy programs to try to get some, our residents some much-needed relief on their electric rates. I'm bringing that up again because, again, tomorrow is Election Day. We usually like to keep things local, but there's a lot going on nationally and at the state level that people are really taking a hard look at. You know, things are more expensive these days, and it's, you know, it's really incumbent on all of us to think about how we can, what, what role do we play and what kind of government we want. So like Mr. Sullivan said, show up, make your voice heard. And, you know, we'll see, we'll see what happens, obviously. But I also want to reiterate that the support of the fire truck, a lot of hard work went into making sure that was going to be acquired at the, at the best price possible, the most affordable method for the Town of Dudley. So it's important that we don't go backwards and make sure that we're replacing our equipment like we do in all of our departments, and making sure we keep, keep our, our public safe. Public safety number one. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Obviously, I'd like to thank all the veterans and anyone that could. Please make sure you honor the men and women that served. I'll thank, in advance, for everyone that's either voted the last several weeks, I was going to be smart, but it's only the last several weeks. And if you haven't voted, get down there on voting day tomorrow, and you know, have your, have your ideas turned into some action. Rare in these days, you have any type of input to these, these things, and you have to, you can't lose any of them. And then town meeting, we've met some town meeting, right? Just thank you to those that came to town meeting. Decisions, very important decisions are made in that, in that meeting by townspeople. And, you know, once again, a number of residents came down and made sure that that process continued to work. But always, you know, asking more people to come and help us with the process is, is so important. That's all I have. Would someone like to move us into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 38, Section 21, specifically Reasons Two and Three to Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparation for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel, or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions, or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel, and to Discuss Strategy with Respect to Collective Bargaining or Litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body as now declared by the chair. And further, the board will not reconvene into public session. The board will discuss draft a next police chief's contract and prepare a strategy for negotiating.
Second. Discussion. Out of favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
John Marcy, aye.
Venus Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye. Give me hands.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.